Good evening, the North Las Vegas City Council welcomes you to our City Council meeting this evening. There are two public forums set aside for public comment, one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end. If you wish to speak, please complete one of the blue cards which shall locate on the table outside the main entrance where you entered, or on the podium rail to your right. I request that you limit and then give the card to the city clerk, she sits right here. And please, we ask that you, when I call you up, that we limit your comments to more than three minutes and we avoid repetition. And so, Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with the bad open meeting law?
Mayor, yes, we are.
Thank you. Tonight we had the opportunity to have an invocation by one of our favorites here, Pastor Ty Neil from the Grace Point Church. Following that blessing and the prayer, we'll have the pledge of allegiance as led by one of our own, very own Special Officer Rebecca Palmer from the North Las Vegas Police Department. Please rise.
Let us pray. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of this great city. Lord, we must begin by confessing our failures and trusting in your mercy and grace. We confess that we at times have become very weary and worn by political process, more often marked by disunity and criticism, rather than by unity and grace. We confess the ways we too grow weary and resign to the ways things are. On a day that marks the 50th anniversary of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s assassination, we know that we have a long way to go, that any nation under God is multi-ethnic nation. We're reminded that in the great city of God that is described in the Book of Revelation, there are many tribes, tongues, and nations. So, Holy Father, save us from our weak resignation. Remind those in leadership how their power is to be used, not for selfish gain, but to give others a voice, a hope, and opportunities. We acknowledge that many burdens this council carry in this work. We empower them, sustain them, oh God. Help them to act with character and conviction. Help them to listen to understanding and goodwill. Help them to speak with charity and restraint. Give them a spirit of service, remind them that they are stewards of your authority. Give them, guide them to be the leaders your people need. Help them see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with them, and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. We also pray for the residents of this great city. For those who seek full, meaningful employment, we pray for work. For all those seeking education, we pray for powerful teachers. For all those seeking peace, train us to work for justice. Father, bless them. Remind us of the truth from the Bible, that as we seek the welfare of the city, we find our own welfare as well. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of mankind. Now, to him who is able to do far more abundantly than all that we can ask or think, according to the power at work within us, to him be glory in the city and in Christ Jesus throughout all generations, forever and ever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Ty, for coming out. We appreciate your wonderful church and all you do for our community. And Officer, for you being here this night, it's nice to have you here, too. Moving on, presentations, we have a presentation this night by Councilman Black, but his, the business owner has misunderstood the location of the building and he's on his way. Is that correct? So, we'll just pass that right there and we'll come back to that again. So, we will move on to, moving on to council items.
Mayor, you were going to make the comment about the proclamation.
Oh, yes, that is correct. We had the opportunity to have wonderful officers come into our building today from the North Las Vegas Police Department, and we, they presented a presentation of what they do for victims, National Crime Victims Rights Week, and so, we gave them a certificate put forth, thanks for all our residents here. And I've asked them to schedule a particular meeting with you guys so you could understand the importance of this Victims Rights Week and how we in North Las Vegas handle these situations, so that we can all be aware, when we see things happening or hear things happening, we can follow our police chief's directive to alert them to these issues and then they can go ahead and work towards solving these victims' rights. So, we had that presentation already. So, moving on to council items. Councilman Barone.
Thank you, Mayor, I really appreciate this. Yes, for the people who are watching and of course for our guests here in attendance, you might have noticed that outside, well, I guess the people who are in attendance will notice this, outside in our Stone Soup Art Gallery, a art show has begun to be hung up here. This Friday, the combined Fine Arts Department of the Rancho High School will be celebrating the Express Five Art Show. It's going to be again this Friday, April 6th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., right outside. I'm inviting everyone to come on by. There'll be other art presentations besides these, I believe there'll be some other works that'll be here. There'll be music, food, and of course, it's free, open to the public, and we invite everyone to come on by and take a look at some of the artwork. And of course, we're hoping to maybe do an employee art show, maybe before the summer's over, you know, coming up. Also, a big deal is, the city has never had a Cinco de Mayo celebration or parade, and we're lucky at doing one on the 5th of May. Now, I'm expecting it to be pretty well attended because I guess the fight between that one guy, Triple G, and Canelo has been, I guess, yeah, it's not going on, so we should have more people actually in attendance. And of course, you know, we're hoping to do a short presentation here next week for the queen of the festival. We also have, I forgot about this one, but we have, on the 29th of this month, here, the 29th of April, we have Fiesta CNLV, Sunday at 11:00 a.m., right here in front of City Hall. For the last couple of years, there's been a really nice little operation there with lots of, with some food, a lot of fun, and again, it's totally free and open to the public. And those are nice things that are nice and humble, Mayor, but I have to admit, we have, we had a fantastic announcement this morning, that I think we should, I should be one of the first people here to toot its horn. If you didn't catch the news, Amazon is opening up a 2.4 million square foot Amazon facility. I guess somewhere it was reported that was 800,000, that's just the first floor. And it seems how there's three floors, you know, it's 2.4 million, Amazon, it's another fulfillment center. It's the largest facility in Nevada, and it's going to create more than 1,000 jobs. I'd like to, at this point, you know, again, say thank you very much, express my sincere, every bit of sincere things that I can, to our Economic Development Office under Gina Gavin. And of course, you know, every other department that we have, legal, has done its, it's more than its fair share, as has our building and our, all of our development offices, our people in Public Works, fantastic leadership there by our city manager and of course, my colleagues and especially the mayor here. We had a vision, we knew where we wanted to go, and we've been able to make this vision come into reality. People might think that we're a little bit crazy here, building pipelines, but as we thought before, you build it and they will come. And, well, Mayor, we're building it and people are following us. And so, I mean, this is, this is another huge announcement, and don't be surprised that there's other announcements, hint, hint, of other large things coming, and they're not so near future. Yeah, not too far away future, I should say. Anyhow, I just, it's, I think, a tribute to everybody who works here at the City Hall Mayor, and I want to say thank you very much to the residents who have had so much faith, I think, in their city leaders and their, and their city staff here. And we're going to all continue, speaking for myself and for you and the rest of my colleagues and everybody else, we're going to keep on working hard to make sure that North Las Vegas sees continued success. I'll just borrow one last thing, Mayor. Back in the olden days, the slogan over Rancho High School was, "The best is yet to come." I'm going to share that with the entire city. The best is yet to come.
Thank you, that was a great report. Councilman Churchill.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman, very well said. Just one brief thing I'd like to mention tonight. Every year, at least twice a year, the Antioch Christian Church that's located on Nature Park Drive in Aliante puts on an event at Discovery Park for families, children, rides, food, games, and once again this year for Easter, I had the pleasure of being asked to attend, and I just wanted to acknowledge, you know, their involvement in our city, as many of our other Christian church here take part in what we do and are really a core value to, to what we have here in Los Las Vegas. Dr. Parsons, Naida Parsons and Mary Ann Marsh do an excellent job there, and I just wanted to acknowledge them tonight and thank them for, for bringing all of those amenities to the park for the families and children, all free. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Goines-Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. This Saturday at Craig Ranch Regional Park, the AFSP, which is an acronym for the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, will be holding a suicide walk. Registration starts at 9:00. The races, it's not a race, just a walk, is from 10:00 to 12:00. And the funds raised through this walk will go for new research about suicide prevention, educational programs, advocacy for public policy, and also just to help support those families that are supported, are affected by suicide, and we just recently had one here with a student last week, so it's kind of a very important, touchy subject. So, that's this Saturday at Craig Ranch. Also, if you recall, Brandon Marshall, last year donated funds to help support our library. He's hosting a Career Exposure Day, which is going to be on Saturday, April 14th, at 4:00. And I've just been invited to speak and we'll be just talking about different career opportunities to youth in, in the city, so hopefully we can get them prepared for that next chapter in their lives. And also, another great opportunity that's going to support nonprofits will be April 15th through the 21st. At Great Clips Barber Shop, it's on the Canary Corner, right there on the corner of Loci and Craig, and every, $5 from every haircut will be donated to local nonprofits. One is the VFW, Just to Help a Hero Foundation, Project 150, which helps homeless youth in our city, underprivileged teens, and then Safe Nest. And so, that event will be from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. daily, the 15th through the 21st. And if you're available Sunday, on that Sunday, I'll be there at 10:00, so if you want to come by and just say hello, maybe you need a haircut, I don't know, but you're welcome to do that. And then, as I mentioned before, our movie Madness series starts, and the first one will be on April 13th, and they're going to be showing Cars 3, and that's at the Valley View Park. And the festivities start, I think, around 7:15, and then as soon as the sun is down enough, then the movie will begin. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Black.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to proudly announce that tomorrow at 1:00 p.m. at the Silver Mesa Rec Center, we will be having the grand opening and ribbon cutting ceremony for the senior center at Silver Mesa. It's a 3,000 square foot expansion, modular building behind the main center. It's something that the seniors have been anticipating for many months. Lots of work has gone into this from several city departments, a tremendous collaboration and effort to make this a reality, and so, it's a beautiful facility that will be well utilized by the senior community in North Las Vegas. And so, if you have time tomorrow at 1:00, come on over and celebrate with us at the Senior Center at Silver Mesa. Also, April is Drowning Prevention Awareness Month, and in connection with that, the Southern Nevada Child Drowning Prevention Coalition is having a, they call it April Pools' Day, clever, event, kickoff event, and that will be hosted this year by the City of North Las Vegas at Silver Mesa Rec Center. That will take place on April 11th, a week from today, at 10:00 a.m. So, if you'd like to come out and support that excellent cause, I'll be there and feel free to join me. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Great reports here. A lot of things happening in our community, a lot of growth, you were saying, Councilman Barone, out in your ward area. Big things are happening out there. Now is the time set aside for the first public forum on posted agenda items. I have one item here, this is the second. Anyone, anyone here would like to come and speak to the City Council at this time? Seeing none, we'll close this portion of the public hearing and we will move on to the agenda.
Item one, approve City Council regular meeting agenda of April 4, 2018, for possible action.
Mayor and Council, the applicant for item three has asked that this item be continued to the May 2nd, 2018 meeting. Staff's recommendation is to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you very much. Chair will take a motion to approve the agenda.
To approve as amended.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Thank you, motion is approved. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Matters listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and may be approved by a single motion. However, any consent item may be moved to the business portion of the agenda for discussion at the request of any council member.
Mayor and Council, the consent agenda consists of items 2 through 7, and staff's recommendation is to approve the agenda as published.
Thank you, Chair. Or, Council, any comments, questions? If not, the chair will take a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to set future public hearing dates.
Matters listed under set future public hearing dates will not be heard by the City Council at this meeting. If you wish to speak on these items, attend the meeting where the public hearing will be heard and submit a blue card to the clerk. Item eight, set date on any appeals filed or required public hearings from the City Plan and Commission meetings.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. I still direct you to set any dates as necessary.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Now, we're moving on to public hearings.
Item nine, VAC 0218 Raceway Business Park, for applicant Hines to vacate commercial driveways, a drainage easement, and a utility easement in an M2 general industrial district on property generally located at the northwest corner of Anne Road and Hollywood Boulevard. APNs 123, 27, 810, 001, 002, 004, and 009.
Thank you. Welcome this evening, and would you state your name for the record?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. My name is Brent Parrish, 5740 South Arville Street, Las Vegas, here on behalf of the client tonight, representing this vacation to be in conformance with standard development policy guidelines set forth by your staff in Development Code. More of a housekeeping item than it is a technical item, and we've read staff's recommendations for approval and concur with those, and here to answer any questions you might have regarding the item.
Thank you. Council, any comments, questions? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved. Thank you very much. Moving on to business.
Item 10, presentation, discussion, and/or action regarding the tentative budget for fiscal year 2018-19.
Thank you. We have our finance director coming up and... Thank you, Corey, for being here this evening.
Mayor and Council, it's a pleasure to be with you here this evening on this annual event. For the record, Darren Adair, Chief Financial Officer for the city, and standing with me here is Corey Canous, who is our Director of Finance. She'll be joining me in the presentation. We're going to make it a team effort tonight, and also Acting City Manager Ryan Juden will be joining us for a couple of the slides.
And Michaela has started her stopwatch.
Not yet.
Which will show up to Darren's. I'm just teasing you, Darren.
Got it. And also, we do want to thank our budget manager and her team who are here tonight, Linda Pulaski and Justin O'Brien. Thank you. They've worked tirelessly with our department heads to pull this information together, and we're excited to do this presentation for you. So, quickly, we'll move to the next slide. It's small print, so I'll do you the favor of reading, this is the cover letter that we typically put out to the Department of Taxation along with our tentative budget, if it receives your approval. Included in this letter is kind of a summary of the, very, very high-level summary of the things that were accomplished with the budget. I did want to share with you just two of the paragraphs in here, particularly the paragraphs on the right-hand side that start at the top, that says, "In fiscal year 2018, the city anticipates only being able to draw $5 million from the Utility Enterprise Fund to subsidize the operations in the general fund. However, projected expenditures are estimated to be 8.1 million below budget, due to vacancy savings of 2.8 million and reductions in supplies and services of 5.3 million, leaving the general fund balance as a projected ending fund balance of 16.4 million or 12.7% of total expenditures." This is relevant because this is how we're projecting the end of this year, and that becomes the starting point for next year's budget. Also included in this presentation tonight is the following four things. It includes the 2009 adopted CIP plan that was presented and approved by City Council just a couple of councils ago. In that construction plan for the city, or capital projects plan for the city, there was 2.3 million that was on, that was funded through the general fund. As you may recall, over the last four or five years, we've tried to drag out our bond proceeds to cover these capital costs rather than tap the general fund, and we've now exhausted our bond proceeds. But with encouraged progress with the bond rating agencies and the bond market, we hope to soon return to finance opportunities for the city. Second thing, this supports the investment and reinvestment in staffing strategy. I'll leave that to our city manager, Ryan Juden, to talk about. And it also includes consideration for some continuing opportunities that were identified by the executive team as initiatives in the upcoming year that can improve current operational practices. And finally, it achieves a balanced budget in the general fund, which we are pleased to report. The last, I believe, three tentative budget presentations before council, we had to start out with identifying a negative deficit that we worked through the budget process to try and resolve, and it's nice to be standing here in front of you on the tentative budget workshop and tell you that we've been successful at achieving a balanced budget in the general fund, with the ending fund balance achieving 12%. So, we're very excited about that. And with that, I will turn the presentation over to Mr. Juden and Ms. Canous.
Thank you, Director Adair. That was great, 3 minutes and 40 seconds. I'll try and top that, because I know that Councilwoman Goines-Brown has a speaking engagement. First, I want to reiterate the thanks and just kind of say it again to the finance department, in particular Linda Pulaski, who I know is kind of difficult for her because there was a changeover in management right in the middle of the budget process, and there was also some change in some prioritization and vision from, from you all, as I, as I worked to make sure that we were all on the same page as we moved forward. And she was able to, I think she had some sleepless nights at first, but she was able to keep pushing through and plotting through as we, we worked on something that was, that made some of the budgeting process more of a policy-driven process. And also, Justin O'Brien and Director Canous for her, her work and his work, they've been really outstanding throughout this process. I've probably increased my strength in my arms from carrying around some of the budget books that we've had to carry around through this process. But one of the first things that I did soon after being appointed by you guys as the Acting City Managers is discuss with you the need for us to hire. It's something that, that we've talked about a lot, but haven't really been able to successfully do. And the first step to doing that was to, to, to work with our bargaining groups, because commonly, the monies that the city has are quickly swept into the CBA agreements, and there's usually not much left for some of the critical hires that we need. So, we came together and I think Councilman Black kind of dubbed it as invest and reinvest, which was a strategy that we would work with our collective bargaining groups to reinvest in our existing employees, but that in so doing, through policy, we would also be able to save and have some money on the table so that we could make some critical hires to increase services to our residents and to help us as we're moving all these great projects. It's great to hear a project like Amazon that's coming, but it's another thing to be able to have the staff to move that through in a timely manner, to meet their accelerated timelines of what they needed to do in order to select North Las Vegas to bring their, their facility. So, what we've been able to do is we've, we've, as you all are aware, with our work with the bargaining groups, we've been able to have reasonable contracts that provide for funds. Those contracts will be coming before council, the next council meeting, but that has enabled us to have the funds that were necessary to, to hire some, some critical positions. So, if you'll go to the next slide, here's a list, just for an idea. This is the product of weeks of work with all the departments. The departments had submitted supplemental requests for positions that they viewed as critical. Yesterday, staff, directors, our directors met together and discussed these hires. And as you, as you recall, one of the things that we implemented in the city in, in early 2014 was a Critical Justification Committee, which consisted of city management, HR, finance, and the city attorney's office. And what that group did is it made sure that critical hires were being made based on what was critical for the entire city, but not necessarily for a department. And so, the meeting we had yesterday, we knew the, the kind of, the pot of money, if you will, that we had, that we were able to scrape together to make some of these critical hires. And just highlight a couple of these and how important they are, if you look at the financial analyst position and the purchasing coordinator. These are positions that are actually, you've heard about before, you maybe didn't realize you're hearing about them, but whenever we have our CAFR report, we are constantly kind of deemed, if you will, that these are positions that are in critical need, that our, our accounting firm tells us, "You guys need to make these hires." And we haven't made them, even though the entire time I've been here, the CAFR report has come back telling the city that we are short-staffed in finance. And where that becomes an actual problem is now it's being picked up by financial analysts on Wall Street. So, in a way, by not making these positional hires, it's actually affecting our credit rating with the city. So, clearly, these are some examples of how critical some of these, these positions are. And so, the product of that meeting with staff yesterday, it was really a good meeting. It was a meeting where every department had the opportunity to understand and appreciate the critical nature of the requests and the needs of the other departments. And what we saw after we all, after everyone presented that had a request for, for a new hire, we actually saw departments looking at each other and saying, "You know, mine's not as critical as yours." And there were, there were some positions that, that we've moved off to, to another time. So, this is really showing the kind of growth that I think Mayor and Council have been asking the city to do for a few years, and, and now through prioritizing and having a real financial approach to our union negotiations, we've been able to ensure that there's, there's money, so that we have the funds that are necessary to increase the services to our residents. I think, Corey, so that's, I don't know if there's any questions on this, or the invest and reinvest and how we've been able to implement your all's vision. If not, then Corey's going to, to pick up and finish the rest of the presentation.
This is a question, do you guys have any questions on, these are brand-new positions that are being in question here? Do you have any questions, Councilman? Not yet. I just, maybe just two.
I would just like to point me out. Right now, I, I'm fortunate to say that, I guess they, they know me in some of our facilities. Just for our public to note, I'm looking over here, we have an auto equipment mix, right? Just right there, and I guess another position is coming up. We have a grand total of like three guys over there that keeps our entire fleet of city-owned vehicles going. That's our patrol cars, our fire truck, fire trucks, other vehicles. These are vehicles that are critical to providing services to the city. They're, I'm amazed they're able to even keep our fleet going. It's an investment, this investment in people is going to allow us to keep the investment that we have in, in machines, that ultimately will allow, you know, our, our police officers to be able to respond in time. There's a car that, that was shown to me that, well, it has its issues. And could you imagine? You're, you are the officer who is responding to a critical thing, maybe a child who's fallen into a pool. You're going to beat the firemen there probably, without respect to our, to our, to our fire department. If there's something else going on, our first responders are literally the first responders there. And the one time when they're called upon to do something, when seconds count, to have a vehicle that's not on there, this is not just an investment, you know, it's an investment that's going to be directly tied to services to our city. And I think it's... And I think it's overdue. It's definitely very timely right now, and everything that you guys can do to make it happen, I'm very, very grateful on behalf of my citizens.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Goines?
Just the three police positions that are on there? Well, I guess the four. Would those be promotions or new hire?
So five of those police officer positions are new hires. So that'll be a new class. And then as you increase the class size, you have to have span and control. Yes, ma'am. That's what that represents. So some of these will be promotions.
Okay.
And some of these, it's, I've been working with the different departments. One of the things that we also have talked about, which you do not see on this list, but it's something that's critical for the city, is secession planning throughout our different departments. So we have several departments that do not have deputy directors. They might have someone that functions and acts in that role, but they don't have that. And so the necessity to make sure that there is both the secession plan as well as someone that's being prepared in a leadership role. So I have been working with PD and FD and the other departments. And so some of, you'll see in this and in the future is some proposals that the departments are making as far as ensuring that there's a secession plan.
I just have two questions. The real property agent, where does that sit within the matrix of a department or responsibility?
So that's a good question. So real property agent is currently, they're in community, neighborhood and community and leisure services with their, in CAS's department, essentially.
Is that a Lorena?
It's, that's Lorena, that's a position. She's a manager of the real property.
Okay. The other question, now maybe time isn't time, but along the line somewhere, we'd like to put a grant writer to work here, you know, so we can really start going out and really finding the new dollars that we need. Can that be maybe just put on the list next time for discussion? Or was it a discussion this time? But the growth of Jennifer and Alfredo's departments need to up with the growth that we're producing.
Good question, Mayor. It actually was a conversation that we had yesterday as we talked about this because that was something that I pointed out to our committee yesterday that this body had brought up in a November council meeting, November 13, and then also was discussed in January 2014 during one of our financial workshops. There were two financial workshops that were given at the time, and it was discussed. And I don't have it with me, but I actually wrote at the bottom of the list, grant writer. I didn't submit any supplemental requests from the city manager's office because I wasn't in the city manager's seat at the time that the request came in. It is something that we discussed. I think we had a really good conversation about it. And I think what came from that conversation is, is it's not necessarily we need a grant writer, but we need a grant coordinator. So where we've seen success, and just talking about it yesterday, and PD had some examples, FD had some examples, I think you guys might have had some examples too, where we've had success in achieving grants in the city is when we actually contract with outside grant writers. And we're not talking about large contracts. I mean, we've seen where a successful $8,000 contract with a grant writer has netted over $3 million in grants. So what we're really looking at is a grant coordinator and someone that, they don't, we don't only need to have the position of a grant coordinator, but they also need to have the budget that allows them to spend on these consultants to help us with grants. So it is a conversation we had, and we will be bringing that back to the council, I'd imagine sometime late summer.
Yeah. I just read today that Henderson Police Department picked up a grant that we would probably qualify for if we'd have, you know, known about that. So, great. I have no other questions, Councilman. Seeing that, I guess Cory will continue on now.
Okay. Okay, I'll just go over briefly some of the numbers in the tentative budget. As you can see, that was pointed out by-
Can you bring the microphone close to your little mouth there? Okay.
As you can see, CFO Adair pointed out that the general fund is balanced. Sea tax revenue and license as permits revenue is showing approximately 3.5% increase year over year. Property tax, year-over-year increase about 8.7%, mostly due to new developments. The charges for services line, you'll see a decrease of 3.7 million. That's mostly a result of a one-time, non-recurring cost recovery. Salaries and benefits have gone up, as you see, as you've heard from Acting City Manager Juden, the 3.2 million invest and reinvest, as well as the remaining is a portion of vacancy savings from the current year, which also, the vacancy savings also resulted in the supplies and services, the decrease in 2018, which will resume its normal balance in 2019. And then the capital outlay projects were charged directly to the general fund in 2018, but will be transferred to capital projects in 2019 for tracking purposes. Approximately 2.3 million of those transfers out is for 2019 CIP projects. And then intergovernmental expense, that's the library subsidy and less will be needed in 2019 because that's the final year that we'll owe money. And then, looking at all the funds, again, the general fund is a balanced budget on the top line. And then the net change numbers that are blue besides the general fund, community development, police, special revenue funds, public safety, and fleet, those are all balanced budgets as well. Almost all the funds with negative net changes are spending down the reserves, the fund balances, in order to cover the cost of CIP projects, which is our only current option to fund projects until we can go out for bonds. And then finally, the debt service change, the debt service spending of reserves is using up prior year increases to the debt reserves, which is saving about 2.6 million from impacting the general fund at this time, which pushes out that impact on the general fund for another year. That's all I have. Any questions?
Can I ask you a quick question on the golf? Clyde, Darren, Director, you might want to come up here on this one. What have we, I know we've been subsidizing the golf courses just a little bit. It's not as bad as was in the past, but can you give me an upgrade on how the golf system, situation's working?
Yes. Director Palmer, this last year, worked on transitioning the management companies into a new contract with a different company. They have been notably from, I've received comments back from some of the regular attendees and users of the golf course, that they've seen improvements there. From a financial perspective, the amount of funding that we have to put in to sustain that obligation there to operate that golf course has, looks like it's going to be reduced by the change in management. So we think we're headed in the right direction. I don't think there is a golf course in town that is in the black, but realistically speaking, our golf course is doing about as good as any of them. And so we're very pleased with what they're doing and the quality of services they're providing there.
Thank you. It's nice to see that as we, every year, we get better at some of these changes that we make. Counsel, any comments or questions on the tentative budget? I mean, the budget workshop we're doing?
Mayor, I just want to, and I know many times before our meetings up here, when we know we're going to have a presentation by Darren, we kind of give him the high-five, meaning hello, how are you? But I just want to say for the record that you do an amazing job, Cory, the young lady and the gentleman back there, of course. I know we can't do our jobs without you, and of course, the amazing progress you made over here over the past few years, it's really the lifeblood of whatever we can do over here. Without your hard work, we wouldn't have all the different departments and the growth that the city has right now. So I'm giving you a high-five now. Has nothing to do with the time factor. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. Obviously, you know, we track the numbers, but it's really the rest of the team, the entire city team, that really accomplishes what you see there reflected in those numbers.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you, members. Any other thing? Thank, Dan, appreciate your presentation. The chair will take a motion to approve the tentative budget for 2018-19.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the tentative budget for 2018-2019.
Thank you. We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to ordinances, final action.
Ordinances listed under final action were introduced at a previous council meeting for action at this meeting but may include emergency ordinances. Item 11, pass and adopt ordinance number 2857, amending section 010 of chapter 16 of title 17 of the municipal code by reclassifying approximately 3.5 acres therein from an RE Ranch Estates District to a C1 Neighborhood Commercial District, ZN 3217, Revere Commerce SWC, for properties generally located at the southwest corner of Commerce Street and Revere Street, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments, questions on this item? Mr. Garcia, you had no presentation, I didn't think so. Any comments, questions, yes, Adam? If not, the chair will take a motion?
Mayor, I'll be happy to make a motion.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item 12, pass and adopt ordinance number 2858, amending section 010 of chapter 16 of title 17 of the municipal code by reclassifying approximately 2.71 acres therein from an RE Ranch Estates District to a C1 Neighborhood Commercial District, ZN 3317, Revere and Commerce NWC, for properties generally located northwest corner of Commerce Street and Revere Street, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Counselor, any comments, questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion?
Mayor, I'll be happy to make a motion to approve this. And thank you, George, for really, I'm personally looking forward to getting that area developed back there. It's definitely a need for what yourself and Randy Black are looking to put in there. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item 13, pass and adopt ordinance number 2869, amending ordinance number 2666, section 1, by amending title 15, chapter 72, section 010B of the municipal code authorizing the building official to approve an exception to requirement to comply with the most recent adopted technical codes for certain single-family home subdivision projects and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments, questions, yes, Adam? If not, the chair will take a motion?
I'd like to move to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to ordinances, introduction only.
There is no public comment for these items and no action will be taken by the council at this meeting. If you wish to speak on any of these items, please attend the meeting where final action will be determined and submit a blue card to the clerk. Item 14, introduce ordinance number 2878, amending section 010 of chapter 16 of title 17 of the municipal code by reclassifying approximately 28.62 plus or minus acres therein from an R3 multifamily residential district to a C2 general commercial district, ZN 0818 Tropical and Lamb Commercial, for properties generally located at the northwest corner of Tropical Parkway and Lamb Boulevard, and providing for other matters properly related thereto. Item 15, introduce ordinance number 2879, amending section 010 of chapter 16 of title 17 of the municipal code by reclassifying approximately 40 plus or minus acres therein from an OL open land district to an M2 general industrial district, ZN 0718 Tropical Distribution Center Aspen, for properties generally located at the northwest corner of Ann Road and Mount Hood Street, and providing for other matters properly related thereto. Item 16, introduce ordinance number 2880, amending section 010 of chapter 16 of title 17 of the municipal code by reclassifying approximately 8.97 plus or minus acres therein from an OL open land district to an M2 general industrial district, ZN 0918 Green Therapeutics, for properties generally located at the southeast corner of Mount Hood Street and Tropical Parkway, and providing for other matters properly related thereto. Item 17, introduce ordinance number 2882, amending title 5 of the municipal code by repealing an existing chapter 5.14 childcare facilities and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Thank you very much. Moving on to appointments.
Item 18, appointment by Mary Lee of a citizen member to the Planning Commission to fill an unexpired term ending June 30, 2021.
Thank you. We have one of our members of the Planning Commission that is going to take another position somewhere else within the city, and so he will not be serving on this board again. So I think it was off the utilities board, we had a member of utilities board who had been diligent in his meetings and, you know, had proven himself worthy enough to be considered to another board of maybe a little bit more significant. So at this time, I'd like to appoint George Warner to the Planning Commission to fill the unexpired term of Randy Robinson. That would be my motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to city manager's report. Oh, oh, I am so sorry. Our gentleman has arrived. So every month, a city council person gets to, goes to rotating order to highlight a business within their district. And so this month, the blessing falls upon Councilman Black. And Councilman Black has a business that he would like us to learn about and to praise and thank them for being in his district. So Councilman Black, I think we'll all go downstairs where you get his presentation.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's my distinct honor and privilege to recognize tonight an amazing business that has been in Ward 3 for a long time. But before I do so, I have to put out a disclaimer and a warning that this presentation might make you hungry, but it won't make you hangry. Just standing by Frank, I could smell the tasty food here. Anyway, so this is Frank Go, and this is O, and they're from Thai Basil Restaurant at 2696 West Ann Road, right at Ann and Simmons. At the turn of the century, which was not long ago, when there was amazing development going on in North Las Vegas, and El Dorado was completed and Aliante became a community, Mr. Frank here decided to open up Thai Basil Restaurant in 2003. Great opportunity. Then the economy went down. He struggled, like most small businesses, to keep his business alive and thriving, but he never backed off on his customer service and his product quality. As a matter of fact, when you go into Thai Basil, you're welcomed with a smile, kind of like you're at Frank and Christina's dinner table. The furnishings are beautiful with Asian-inspired decorations. Frank is originally from Vietnam, but he, they sell a wide array of Asian cuisine, sushi, Vietnamese food, Chinese food, and of course, Thai food, hence the name, Thai Basil. And so please put your hands together for Frank and O from Thai Basil Restaurant. The Ward 3 Business of the Month. Here you go, Frank. You want to say anything? Today's special, anything?
Well, thank you very much for the practice. We, just a small business, but we try hard and stay. So, well, next month, we're going to be 15 years, so, yeah.
Thank you so much, Frank. And O is here. This man Frank's been working hard in the restaurant business for a long time. I think he's ready to retire perhaps in the not-too-distant future. This gentleman will be taking over the walk, if you will, right? Taking over the walk? Is that what you use to kick the foot? Anyway, but thank you so much for being a great business in Ward 3. Let's take some photos.
Now, once again, we'll call for moving on to city manager's reports.
Mayor and council, I just, I don't have a lot to report tonight, just some of it was kind of already done in the item on the budget. I know that people woke up this morning, were excited to see the news that went out. I think they went out on Amazon. It was timed when markets opened back east. But I, the excitement doesn't stop there. We have another great announcement that we'll be making in a few weeks of a deal that's going to be partners, or not partners, neighbors, I guess you could say, to that facility, another great one. It's interesting, I was speaking with Councilman Brown about it earlier, that sometimes, because we've had so many of these great successes, that it's, the joy is lost sometimes, but it's not completely lost. So I think one of the most important things to point out, we'll have an item coming before council next meeting, an oversized agreement for the water on the south of Apex. One of the things that was highlighted in the city's press release that went out on the announcement today was how, in many ways, bringing infrastructure to the Speedway area was proof of concept for Apex. By this body taking that, I don't want to say risk, but by doing that and opening that area up, Director Gavin and her team have seen businesses that have come in there before we've even built it. So we were saying, guys, if we just build it, they'll come. And that's kind of the message that I know you all were talking with the residents about. The reality is, is we didn't even, we were just planning it and they started coming. So it's great to see that. We do have, and we're starting to see the shift- to see that. We do have, and we're starting to see the shift now of necessity for Apex, because a lot of the land that we have, the larger areas of land are now going to be only in Apex, because we're so rapidly developing the other areas. So, we're excited to see the things that happen as we have the discussion next week on adding another 19 miles of waterline, and the, all the acreage that that's going to open up. We met today with GoEd and talked with them about the, what we're doing in the north and the south in Apex. And even they were, they were excited to see that, because it's really something that lacks, and quite frankly, everywhere south of Tonopah. There's a great industrial park in the north, but to have an industrial park like this in the south. So, just, that was the exciting underlying thing of the news today, is that that was a bold move that the city made, that made that land available for these businesses to come. So, kudos to you and to staff that made it happen.
Thank you. I'd just add on to your presentation. That's a testament. This is actually their fourth building in North Las Vegas. And it's because of the decisions that the council has made to make this a business-friendly community, without shortchanging any of the requirements, or, you know, risk to life and stuff like that. But I think Director Gavin gets a lot of support. But I would tell you, if it was not for the first floor and the second floor, Jennifer Duty and all that she does, and Randy Duvall and Alfredo, we wouldn't be turning these properties over like we are. So, everybody in this whole building contributes to the success. But the leadership is just the thing that I'm the most impressed with. So, you directors are just fantastic. Thank you so much for every one of you who have input and everything. Even the library director has affected success for some of the great things he's doing down over here that haven't come yet. But our directors are just incredible. And I appreciate you men and women for being a part of the team. Thank you very much. Moving on to public forum, this time set aside to speak to the city council on any item that you would like to. At this time, Mr. Gary Bichard, please go forward. Thank you, Gary. I didn't see you there.
Yeah, but those who've been here for the last couple of weeks, have been talking about white men's oppression on black men. I think that's unfair. People should move on, talk about how the white race has brought other people down. Why is the mic not on? For years- Okay, I didn't know I had to be audio tech, too. For years, the white race is also trying to hold back other races, like, and religious groups, like the Jews. For some reason, for thousands of years, the Jewish race has been brought down, and their rights have been taken away from them. So badly, that even when they came to America to looking for freedom, most of the Jews would change their name to a name that was not linked with the Jewish religion, or the culture, or the faith. All the entertainers would change their name to a non-Jewish name. The first two Jewish entertainers to admit they were Jewish was Edcantor and Al Jolson, which has nothing to do with what I'm going to talk about. I'm going to talk about Jonas Salk. In 1950, just five years after the war that would end all wars, another dark, unseen, insidious evil crept into America. It was a disease that had been around for thousands of years, yet modern medicine knew almost nothing about it, only that it's about its crippling effects that often killed its victims. In 1955, the disease, for some unknown reason, became epidemic, not just in America, but worldwide. Strangely enough, my hometown of Sioux City was hard as hit, because the disease seemed to enjoy hurting young children. Hysteria broke out all over America. Parents kept their kids home from school, from church, wouldn't let their kids play with other children, because no one knew for sure how the disease was transmitted. In 1948, Jonas Salk began a passionate seven-year, all-out effort to find a vaccine. In 1955, in the darkest hours epidemic, the Salk vaccine not only saved millions of lives, but within 10 years, the disease had all but been eradicated. For a short time, Jonas Salk was the king of the world. He could have been president. He could have done anything he wanted. He could have been a multimillionaire. But Jonas Salk did not patent his drug. Instead, he gave it away to people for 35 cents a dose. If the drug was invented today, it would cost $2,500 a dose, because of corporate greed. By the way, I happen to have a picture of an iron lung. That's what the kids were stuck in. Imagine being a five-year-old kid, had to live 24 hours in that machine. Jonas Salk was not in it for the money. He was a scientist and humanitarian, but his, he was also a Jew. In other words, he was a Christ killer, a money-grabbing heeb, a kike, and a yid.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Moving on, Ms. Carolyn Heinser. Am I saying this right, Ms. Heinser? I'm sorry. It's not your writing, it's probably my pronunciation.
Hello. I'm here because I need a little help. I live in North Las Vegas, and all my neighbors, they complained about my yard when I felt like I had everything, you know, that was blessed with everything I had in my life. And they complained to the code enforcement. And I had a certain time to clean my yard and everything. But what they did is took everything out of my yard, including dogs, and cars, and stuff that you could sit on in front of my house, and I don't know where to go for, you know, to get new. I have to replace all that.
I can just tell you, the city manager sits right here, and the police chief is sitting in the very back. That'd be information I don't know the answer to. But I will tell you, our code enforcement tries to give people enough time to-
Well, I was end up, February 2nd, someone beat me up for the money that I had in my pocket, that I get only SSI. Then, I was end up in hospital and jail. So, right when I was on my way home to do something, every time I stepped out of my house, the neighbors would come and start calling the police on me and video me. They even took pictures of me across the street at the Smith with my dog, and sent it to my sister in New York. You know, they're harassing me, and didn't allow me to do anything on time. I always had everything done, and they could Google my house every time.
Where do you live, exactly?
I live at North Las Vegas. My address is 3500 Tabor.
Yeah, I think, is that your area, Councilman Bron?
Yes, I do believe so.
So, Councilman Bron, I think that's the area of council. Maybe he can meet with you after the meeting, and we can try to figure out, sort this out. Would that be okay?
Okay, because they took everything, they put me in jail, and they came and did whatever they wanted in my yard. They took three dogs out, and I'm not allowed to have them back. I have all the stuff that was outside was supposed to go in, and the stuff that was in the house was supposed to come out. I'm like, I don't know what to do.
Okay. I think the good councilman there might be able to try to help sort this out and figure out what's happened with this, okay? So, if you'll wait for-
Even cars they took away.
Okay.
And dogs.
Well, he's the leader of that area. Maybe he can help you out a little bit better.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to come address the city council at this time? If not, this meeting is adjourned.